Having a moment of silence to honor our fallen servicemen and women. Thank you.
Good evening. Today is Tax Grievance Day. Residents who wish to protest their home tax assessments may do so. Today is the last day that residents can present their grievances to the Board of Assessment to correct what they may perceive to be an erroneous assessment. The Board of Assessment have reviewed convened at 5:30 PM as required by law, and that this board will be sitting until 9:30 PM to be available to hear anyone who would like to speak about their assessment. We also have our village assessor, Tom Donato, here this evening to assist in this process. I'm opening up the board of meeting for this evening and we'll proceed with the regular board meeting. But if anyone would like to speak about their assessment, please let us know when we recess from the board meeting to go back into the Board of Assessment meeting, and then we will go back to the regular board meeting. I would now like to begin tonight's meeting with an oath of office for a new police officer, Mr. Stephen Denisee. Mr. Denisee, would you please stand? Commissioner Jackson, would you like to say a few words about Mr. Denisee?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, to me, this is a welcome back. Steve Denisee grew up in Garden City. He started as a lifeguard with the village. And he also, uh, he worked for me as a police aide. He attended CW Post, played collegiate soccer, and has a BS degree in physical education. As I said before it began, in 2008 with the Garden City Police Department as a park enforcement aide. 2010, he left to join the NYPD. In 2014, he left to join the MTA. He received the Medal of Valor for the NYPD and the MTA. He received numerous awards, including Cop of the Month, Excellent Police Duty, and Lifesaver Award. He decided to bring his experience back home to his community of Garden City. I will tell you, he was one of the best employees I ever had as a, when he was a park enforcement aide. So I'm really looking forward to have him back again as a police officer with the village.
That's great. Very good. Thank you very much. Denisee, I want to invite you up to the desk. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'll go slowly. I, Stephen Denisee.
I, Stephen Denisee.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And the laws and ordinances in the Village of Garden City.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer with the Garden City Police Department.
The duties of a police officer in the Garden City Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
By the powers vested in me as Mayor of the Village of Garden City, I declare you duly appointed. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see his family here.
They had family.
Family and relatives.
Come on.
Come on.
Someone's got to hold the baby, right?
Yeah.
Go watch.
Uh, all right. Bring the baby. That's your son. That's a whole lot.
Got the baby coming. That's right.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
I never those games.
Thank you. Bruce, do I go to you now?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Members of the board, at this point, I would like to take item number four off the consent calendar and move it forward in order that it can be presented to the residents here as well as being suitable for a vote.
I'll second that.
Now, this item here, the resolution will be discussed by trustee Flanagan. Is that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Garden City notes that the presence of a casino and proposed ancillary uses of the Nassau Hub would result in a negative impact on our quality of life that would be dramatic. And the placing of a 24-hour casino and proposed ancillary uses in the heart of Garden City and Nassau County would permanently impact the character of the surrounding communities. That is the resolution. And trustee Flanagan, if you could please read into the record the complete resolution for the board.
Thank you. So that's the first paragraph of our resolution to share it in its entirety. The Board of Trustees of the Village of Garden City opposes the presence of a casino and proposed ancillary uses at the Nassau Hub, as this will have a negative impact on our village and the surrounding communities. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Garden City notes that the presence of a casino and proposed ancillary uses at the Nassau Hub would result in a negative impact on our quality of life, and that would be dramatic. And the placing of a 24-hour casino and proposed ancillary uses at the heart of Nassau County would permanently impact the character of the surrounding communities. And whereas the board has received considerable input from residents opposing a casino and other uses at the Nassau Hub site. And whereas the serious security issues that surround casinos are well-known, including illegal activity, crime, human sex trafficking, DWI's prostitution, drugs and problem gambling, and the impact on our village's roadways, which are already overburdened with traffic, would be significant. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Garden City, on behalf of the residents of Garden City, is adamantly opposed to a casino and proposed ancillary uses at the Nassau Hub site. And be it further resolved that the board urges Nassau County to not authorize the transfer of the license agreement for the Nassau Hub property so as to facilitate a casino and proposed ancillary uses at the site. And implores Nassau County to look towards appropriate uses of this property that will enhance our communities rather than negatively impact them.
I move for the resolution to be voted on the board.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Mr. Mayor, having the resolution passed, I turn it back to you to continue with the agenda in its normal order.
Thank you. I would now like to call upon the department heads, beginning with Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the three items on the agenda. Number seven is twice a year, we have to get the scales qualified by the New York State DOT, the Bureau of Ways and Measures. This is required since we issue many tickets for overweight violations. So I'm asking for permission to send an officer, again, in May to this certification process. We'll be going again in the fall. Number eight is prepared 9/11 emergency communication service description. This is a no cost to the village. This is a, um, prepared 9/11 gives us the ability to send messages to recipient and receive messages. So if somebody wants to send us a text message or a video of something that's going on, whether they're witnessing or being a victim of, they can send it to us. We can also manage canned messages. That's like messages that you would always ask, you know, where are you, what's going on type of stuff. We also will have the ability to get live stream video from the person or the witness. And we can also, we have blur and unblur capability. So this is another situation where this could help us in our investigations and help us to get to a scene right away and also know what we're walking into, so we'll be better prepared. Okay, number nine is flock safety. This is a, we are requesting permission for the placement of 12 LPRs at various locations in the village. This is a sole source provider. This is a lease agreement. They will be used as deterrent for, to crime and will assist department and gathering information to assist in the ongoing investigations. They, with the ones we have now have been very helpful and useful in solving crimes. We have a case going on now where it looks like it's going to be very instrumental. So I'm asking permission to help our investigation capabilities by installing these cameras. That's all I have, Mayor.
Commissioner, if I understand correctly, the units that are on number nine of the calendar are actually fixed units or not ones that would actually be on the vehicles? Is that correct?
Yes, we have two on the vehicles now, and we have a few fixed in the village already. This will be additional fixed units throughout the village. We want to have a little more coverage throughout the village from west to east. And this, uh, this is a little different than the ones we have. The ones in the cars are hooked up to DMV. These are more investigation and evidence gathering.
Thank you.
They're used on an offshore and have done very well with them. Oh, I'm sorry, license plate readers, LPRs. Thank you, counsel. It's been reviewed by counsel and through the form. Thank you very much. I'm sorry about that. I talk like a cop too much sometimes.
Thanks, Commissioner Jackson.
Commissioner Jackson, you might share with, and by the way, thanks for all of the great work you do, department, especially recently, you've been very busy with first aid and so on, and crime. But you might share with them that, that burglar was caught that robbed, was a TD bank.
Yes, um, yeah, the, we had our, beginning of last month, we had a bank robbery. Subject entered a bank threatening use of a gun and a knife. He had several in the county last week. He tried the same thing in, I think it was Baldwin. And then he, the county police responded and they were able to apprehend him at a local CVS. And they were able to solve all the crimes. They placed him at all those locations. So they were able to take that person off.
Thank you.
Red, so. That's a good job by Nassau County on that one.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Any other comments? Let's move on. Fire chief's per.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees. The fire department has one item on the agenda, item number 18, adoption of a bond resolution. Board authorization is requested to approve the bond resolution as provided by council for the purchase of three fire trucks and equipment totaling $3.3 million. The village will spend $979,000 from existing funds that have already been allocated, and financing will not exceed $2.321 million as provided by bond council. As many of you are aware, have received my emails with the information as to why we're looking for this. Our goal is to improve the operations, enhance our operations, our training, make them more efficient, more effective. And our rigs are similar today, and that's probably the best way to describe them. Our guys are familiar with them. Our membership is familiar and qualified on the apparatus, the equipment throughout it, and we try to lay them out as similarly as possible. The best way to unify our apparatus is to buy them all at the same time. Doing this would actually be financially responsible versus saving it for a couple of years down the line due to the price increases, as I've shared with the board. To save everybody the time and the energy, as we've discussed this, I'll open up to any questions, any trust you may have, comment, question, anything else.
Mr. Mayor, I believe there will be more of a discussion on this particular issue, so if we can have it removed from the consent calendar and have a fuller discussion as to the merits of this proposal.
I agree.
Can I, can I add one thing just to, no, you can't, okay.
Yes, you can.
Oh.
You know.
Shook your head and I'm obeying.
Democracy, I think.
Yeah, so I was the fire commissioner last year, so this is near and dear to me, and I support, you know, all three engines at once. And I thank you for all the effort you put in. Now, you put a ton of effort putting the numbers together, evaluating what equipment is needed so we could standardize. One of the things that people need to be aware of, we used to have a paid department. We no longer have a paid department. So all the engines in town were driven by and operated by paid department. So those paid people would rotate every four months from station two to headquarters to station three. So they were always with the truck. So the truck moved around the village. Now that that's over with, that we only have volunteers, people standing on the engines, standardizing the engines is probably the best idea for safety for the firefighters and our residents. Because then it didn't matter, now it does. A fire increases every 30 seconds, doubles in size. So seconds matter. Previously, volunteer firefighters did not even drive or operate any first-line apparatus. Now they'll be trained on one apparatus, engine with the same apparatus that they could jump from any engine to any engine. So to me, this is critical and it could be a matter of saving lives and also keeping the firefighters safe and her property safe. So I just want to make that comment because a lot of people aren't aware of why they just have a staggered approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other than item 18, we have nothing on the formal agenda, but I'll be happy to answer any other questions that anyone else may have regarding anything else related to the fire department.
We'll continue this later. Thank you. Next is village treasurer Irene. Was she on Zoom?
Mercy.
Oh, Irene, Irene? Oh, you're, oh, you're, you're substituting for her. Thank you. Good evening. I didn't realize that. Now, if you didn't tell me this.
And trustees, uh, we have two items on the agenda. The first is our tax cert settlement. And these settlements are provided by council. And we have two settlements, one for 750 for Checker Glass Corp. For the years 2016, 17 through 2022, 23, and also 180, 2,000 for Tree Line Garden City Plaza. And this is for tax years 2017 through 18 through 22, 23. The next item that we have is for our annual GFOA conference, which is a very good conference that we, in the finance department, attends. We normally alternate each year. And it gives updates on gas, beer, and other current matters impacting municipalities and treatments, accounting treatments, and that kind of pertinent information. And I will be attending this year and we're seeking approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments, questions? Move on. Police Superintendent Giuseppe Giavanello.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. The building department doesn't have anything on the agenda tonight, but I just wanted to give the board just a brief of the performance of February. The performance in February was, we received and issued 90 applications. We performed the 98 building inspections. And with that, that includes the, um, a total of 83,000 in revenue in the building department for the month of February. That's all I have, Mayor. If the board has any questions or comments, I'll be happy to answer.
Sir, I will follow up as I did this afternoon with you with regard to the status of firehouse number two. And if you'll be kind enough to inform the rest of us, the progress that is being made with regard to that issue.
Absolutely. So we had a discussion with BBS Architects and Engineers last week. They are putting together a few schematic designs of the building. I hope to receive that by the end of this week, no later than the next week. And they're basically coming up with the interior design. And as we discussed, a squaring off of the building, the back of the building there. So they're going to come up with two preliminary designs for us to review. And once they have that designed together, we can share that with the board and chief.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah. Giuseppe, has Westerman been in the building yet to do their?
Oh, yes. Westerman was in the building early this week. And he's going to be back in the building tomorrow to say that he appreciated that the building was cleaned and it's actually safer to walk. Didn't make that comment. But they were in last week and, and they're going to be back in tomorrow with the mechanical engineer. I spoke with him this morning. He's going to send us a preliminary draft, hopefully by the end of this week, possibly Friday, if not first next week. And we're going to review that preliminary draft. And then we're going to hopefully have a presentation with him and his team at the next, hope to be the next coming board trustees meeting.
We'll all get a copy of that draft, I guess.
Absolutely. Soon as I receive that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Giuseppe, quick question on the designs for the Edbury Firehouse. Will that include pricing?
Say again?
Will that include pricing?
I did actually have, have them put a preliminary number together as far as the two schematic designs. So that the schematic design will include pricing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Giuseppe.
You're welcome.
Next, Recreation Commissioner Paul Blake. Good evening.
Let's see. Good evening. Got it? Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Recreation has several items on the agenda tonight, starting with number 10, which is the purchase of a replacement mower. We had put this in the budget to buy a Hustler brand mower. Unfortunately, Hustler has been sold to Stanley Tools and they no longer make commercial mowers, so we had to look elsewhere. The maintenance staff has settled on a Toro Z Master mower. We had the mower in on Friday for a demo and everyone seemed happy with it, including John Gardner and the mechanics down at the shop. We would like to purchase that mower. It is available on state contract for $68,512.36, to which we would like to add a canopy, a sun canopy for $380. This brings, uh, the price to, uh, that's 68,512.36. We do have money available in the recreation capital account due to some savings on other equipment that we purchased. This is one of those mowers that puts an 11-foot swath and it will be used at St. Paul's to maintain the field areas there. Number 11, we would like to have the board renew the grounds maintenance contract with Conkel Landscaping. This will be the final renewal under this contract. Conkel has done a good job this year on maintaining the areas they are responsible for. That is due largely in part to increased oversight by our department. We're now getting the results that we expected when they were engaged the first time. So we would like to extend this contract one last time before we rebid, potentially with some slight modifications for the next contract.
So Paul, you're satisfied with that work?
Absolutely. They've done a good job and they stayed on site a lot longer this year than they normally do. They normally close out around the middle of November, but they worked with us right through the middle of January, picking up leaves and branches and things that had come down. They, they stepped up this year and did a nice job.
Good to hear.
Finally, number 12, Senior Center Repairs. This is a multiple item project. Number one, we are asking board authorization to declare an emergency so that we can get the repairs at the senior center done in an expeditious manner. We have to go out to bid on this. It's going to add months to the process. Next, we request authorization to accept the assurance payment that we received from Chubb Insurance of $252,046.36, with the understanding that they may enhance this amount. We have submitted to Chubb Insurance a copy of the estimate that we had from Belfour, which was higher than this. They are currently comparing the estimates and they've told me that they anticipate there will be an increase. That still leaves us about $6,000 short. We're going to turn, transfer that out of Maintenance Senior Recreation Center. We would then like to engage Belfour Restorations, 60 Raynor Avenue, Ron Concomit to do the repairs at a price of $284,033.45. And finally, there is a credit available to us for the flooring that we had already purchased to have installed at the senior center. And that will help bring this price down a little bit, and we may not have to take anything out of that Maintenance Senior Fund to get this work done. The HVAC project is done, I'm told. We're just awaiting the installation of a blower motor on one of the units out back. It was the change order that you folks approved at your last meeting. And today, Preferred Construction, which is the flooring contractor, arrived on site and began to work on the subfloor. So the restoration and the repairs are underway. I spoke with Belfour on the phone this afternoon and they indicated that once we have approval from you folks, they are ready to schedule the work and get going on it. So we would like to get this done as quickly as we can.
Can you just explain one thing to me about Belfour? Is Belfour, are they, is this a negotiated contract or was this being, was bid?
It was a contract that they gave us based on their work doing the restoration of the building. But we also had an estimate from J.F. Heard Company that was referred to us over by Chubb. And the concept and the scope of work was almost identical. But the Belfour contract included some additional work in the kitchen that the other company neglected to include. So we decided this was the most prudent contract to go with.
Belfour is very reputable. I've dealt with them before over many years. They're very reputable.
Very responsive on the phone and through the emails, so I think we have a good contractor.
I'm surprised you had Chubb as an insurer.
Chubb was easy to deal with as well. A couple of emails, couple of phone calls, they got right back to us and were very accommodating.
That's a very good, very good company.
Yes. Mr. Blake?
Yes, sir.
Part of the reason for the request for a, an emergency declaration, for those that do not know it, is if we did not, as a board, do that, it would be necessary for us to go to an RFP process, which would in fact remove the senior center from the village inventory of locations that we could use for upwards of three to six months.
I think that's a conservative estimate.
Now, with regard to Belfour, the documentation that was provided to me, they actually specked out every wall, every paint, every tile. And there is a program that is used. And once those calculations are done, by going to an emergency with Belfour, it then becomes what is referred to as an AP, an agreed price. So they would be able to engage the services and get it done quickly. Because I know there are certain people that need to have that building soon.
I, I am top of the list on that, trustee Torino. I need that building open again, no question. One of the things that impressed us, and I know Mr. Giavennelli and Mr. Barone will agree, the thoroughness and the attention to detail that Belfour put in their estimate. You hit it pretty squarely on the head. They didn't just put every paint color and every tile in. They were down to every screw that holds in the hinges on the doors. It was about as thorough and complete a list as I've seen, and I've been doing this a long time now.
As have I, and there was a lot of pages to it.
I'm not surprised. I've been doing this a long time. Well, that's good to hear, gentlemen.
Well, quick, quick question. Okay, just a quick question. On the budget, you know, when you're looking for the Toro Z Master, so we have that money in the capital budget.
Yes.
And you're just going to move it over. So everything you have budgeted for and everything.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good job. Also, you might share with the group the work you did at St. Paul's for trustee Kelly.
We, uh, we had our maintenance crew out. Trustee Kelly had requested that we take a look at that post and rail fence that runs from the garage next to the field house. It runs out east to Rockaway Avenue. And it separates what we call the corral, where kids go to practice soccer and lacrosse. Separates that from the road that comes in off of Rockaway Avenue. And there were a couple of sections that were missing and a couple of sections that could have been in better shape. But trustee Kelly had requested that we move the opening in that fence to the location of the new crosswalk that's about to be painted there by DPW. So in, in anticipation of that, the maintenance crew went out and completely closed all of the split rail from the garage out to Rockaway Avenue. It's now one complete fence. It's intact. It's in good shape. And we're just waiting for the crosswalk to be painted to cut that opening in the fence.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
And I like your tie.
Next is superintendent of public.
Wait, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
The first, thank you, Paul, for getting that started. I know I want that crosswalk. We want to get that in there for the spring season. Trustee Chester, you referred to Belfour in terms, flattering terms just a moment ago. So you have experience with them.
Yes, I have over a number of, good number of years. Thank you.
Next, new superintendent of public works, John Barone. Your first public speaking assignment.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees. DPW has five items on the agenda tonight. The first item is number 13. Board authorization is requested for two of our water department employees to attend the American Waterworks Association Conference. The conference is in Saratoga and it's required to maintain our water plant operator's license. Items 14 and 15 are directly related to each other. Board authorization is requested to approve two proposals, one by JT Masonry and the other by Intellectech in order to repair damages to the DPW facility that was caused by normal operations. The first proposal is to fix the masonry wall. And the second proposal is to remove and reinstall the fire detection systems. Item number 16 is for the approval of a maintenance bond for Philcross Industries for the completion of the interim emerging contaminant removal at well sites number 13 and 14. The maintenance bond is the amount of $1,180,695.72. Item number 17 is board authorization requested to engage Nelson and Pope for the design of the crosswalk on 7th Street at Dunkin' Donuts. That was, I believe, approved by the traffic commission. That's all the items on the agenda tonight for DPW. If any board members have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions?
You just mentioned the 7th Street Crosswalk, John. What's the timeframe on that?
We won't have a schedule until we actually engage them, at which point they will give us a schedule. And once we have the design done, we'll have to bid out the project.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? Thank you. Next, Gary Fishburg, Village Council. Good evening.
Fine. I have nothing on the agenda, Mayor, but I just wanted to make you aware of some projects that I.
Eric, I think the mic's not working.
I had nothing on the agenda. But I wanted to make you aware of a project that I've been working with DPW. There was a default on a contract to build a new toilet facility at the DPW yard. There was a contractor by the name of Benchmark that defaulted on the contract. And we have submitted, there's a, there's a performance bond. We have submitted a claim on that performance bond to the surety company and have written an appropriate letter to the contractor terminating the contract. So hopefully we will hear from the surety company very shortly in terms of their taking over that project. The project was $162,000, but the village had not paid out any money to the contractor as yet. So it's the obligation of the surety company to step in and complete the contract. So we're hoping that will happen shortly.
Thank you. Comments? Okay, we'll be on. Next, without least, Village Administrator Ralph Smazey.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, trustees and residents. First, I want to thank Deputy Village Treasurer, Darcia Palmer, first pinch hitting for Irene tonight, or Irene Wu, our treasurer. I also want to welcome Mr. Barone to his first official BOT meeting. There's two items on the agenda, Mayor. The first is the appointment of Mr. Stan Carey. Mr. Carey has been working with the water department as a consultant from H2M over the better part of a year. As such, he has provided much-needed expertise and support for the many interrelated activities that make up day-to-day water operations, including New York State Department of Health and Nassau County Department of Health regulatory requirements, as well as input into the many capital projects we've been working through. With the appointment of Mr. Carey, the village will be retaining a very experienced individual to be the superintendent of water and sewer operations. From 2010 through 2021, Mr. Carey served as the superintendent of the Massapee Water District. And prior to that, he spent 12 years as the deputy director of the Suffolk County Water Authority. His career and experience in water operations spans over 30 years. With this hiring, the village is acquiring the services of a highly skilled professional in an area where people of this quality are very hard to find. I ask the village board for your support and look forward to welcoming Mr. Carey to the village. The only other item that I was going to comment on has been removed from the consent calendar, that is item number 18 under the fire department. I will participate as needed in that discussion with Chief Burn. Thank you, Mayor. I welcome any questions.
Ralph, what is the latest with the planting along Main Avenue by the Merlin Station? We obviously got these little bushes, little nothing bushes. And you, I think, was reaching out to Alan Paskoff, the head of 3TC. Have you heard anything from them? Are they going to do anything on that?
No, I have not heard. I did, I did reach out immediately upon the receipt of the initial email. Mr. Paskoff responded the next day that he would get back to me next week, that would have been last week. I also copied Mr. Tifano from the Long Island Railroad slash MTA on that email. I was here this weekend and I took photographs of the area. I did not get to send them out today, but I will do so tomorrow and follow up to see if we can have a discussion.
Okay, if you could follow me that email, I'd appreciate it because I want to reach out to them too.
I will, sir.
At this point. I don't know if you or the mayor has any updates on the light baffles and the discussion of what they wanted to take out for enhanced landscaping? Have you heard anything on that? Because I haven't.
There's no comment, as I know.
Okay, because we're.
Still following up on the revised landscaping, am I correct, Ralph?
There was going to be a discussion in the spring. Again, this is, this involves both the MTA and Mr. Paskoff from 3TC. We have not had any meetings on that, I will reach out to them again.
Okay. All right, thank you.
On some of the subject of the road work that's going on at Maryland Avenue. Do you have any hard invoices or updates on the cost?
So two things. First, I want to go back to Mr. Trustee Chester's question. In the last couple of weeks, I believe I saw an email from from the Long Island Railroad, which, which might have had numbers on the outstanding question that I pushed aside because I was doing budgets. I will look for that tomorrow and send it to the board.
Yeah.
It's your question, Mayor. I apologize if it gets sooner, but it is budget season.
I'd like to see that.
Mayor, to your question, I asked Mr. Barone if there were any invoices for the work already, that already proceeded. I believe the invoice is about $747,000 and change for the work that has been completed to date. That does not include the asphalt work that will.
What is that, what is that for? Is that just for the actual road work?
That was for the, well, John, why don't you comment on the details?
Mr. Mayor, so we have received, not estimated quantities, but we received a draft invoice from the contractor and we're reviewing estimates right now. There seems to be a conflict with the curb item, which is probably one of the most simplest items to, to measure. It's in the tune of about $700,000. So we just haven't formally received the invoice yet.
That's only one aspect of the job.
Correct, that involves all the concrete work. It involves the road base that was dug out, dug out, topsoil that was installed. It does not include all the base repair and the road paving that's to come in the springtime, along with the striping.
That doesn't include landscaping either.
Correct, does not include.
It includes the drainage as well, that was mentioned.
When you have those numbers, please give them to the board, please.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, with regard to items number one and two on the board of trustees with Mr. Carey. I personally met with Mr. Carey during prior board meetings with regard to personnel issues. And he favorably impressed me with both his background. And more importantly, there has to be the understanding that with regard to Mr. Carey as superintendent of water and sewer operations, this is a multi-dimensional position that has extreme exposure, if not done correctly, and requires licenses that need to be in place if the village is to operate its facilities correctly. What most people may not know is that recently, through the efforts of Mr. Spazzi, an application was made for obtaining funds for the water department and for funding certain operations. And since he knows it better than I, I will hand off the football to him.
Thank you, trustee Torino. So the monies that trustee Torino references are regards to the state grants through the Environmental Facilities Corporation, acronym is EFC. These were applied for by H2M on our behalf for the multiple AOP installations at our six well sites and our 10 wells. The finance department has been following up, Ms. Palmer specifically is working with them. It's a long, arduous process, a lot of documentation, a lot of crossing Ts and dotting Is. But in last week's press release, Governor Hokel's announced some monies for water and 5.3 million was stated about the, was being given to Garden City for the Clinton Road facility. That is only one of the grants that we are positioned to receive. All in all, the water emerging contaminant upgrade of infrastructure will cost the village about $53 million, give or take. The grants that we are in line to receive, Clinton Road being the first one that's been fully authorized, is about 25.3, representing 50.7% of the total cost. So our actual cost will be a little less than half of the full cost. 53 might be too high, might be 51. Nonetheless, it's 50.7% of that, of all those emerging contaminant projects will be covered by grants eventually once all the paperwork finds its way through the pipeline. And I want to thank you, Darcia, specifically, and Treasurer Wu for work with H2M to secure all the proper documentation. It's a group, it's a team effort, these things.
Congratulations on the grants and Darcia, thank you for your work.
Any other comments?
I just have a question for Mr. Barone. The mayor had mentioned the landscaping end of the project, but have we gotten any RFPs on that yet? Because that obviously is going to have to start in the spring.
We have not gotten any RFPs yet. I will make it a point to work on that RFP and get it out to bid.
Thank you.
Trustee Chester, I was, I was thinking that the village may want to take the path of soliciting a landscape architect for this work. So as a professional is viewing it versus us deciding as laypeople what to put here and there. So I think the RFP would be, let's, let's find someone who does this for a living and who can guide us properly on the type of species, size of species and location of species, so that at least give us a guideline, a guidance on this.
Okay, I mean, I don't have any objections.
We at one point in time had somebody that knew what they were going to do about plants, whether it's a horticulturist or whatever else. So if your crystal ball has better vision than mine, which has glaucoma, are you able to predict the future if internally we may have some candidates who can fulfill the role that Mr. Spazzi was mentioning?
Well, we have a pretty talented young man that's our nursery manager. And I believe trustee Chester has met with Steve a few times. He has a good eye for plants and a good eye for design. He is not a landscape architect, but he's been here 27 years and he has taken care of all of the plantings and our monuments and our beds and all the work on Franklin and Stewart. So I'm sure he would be happy to lend a hand if, if requested.
Yes, he's quite impressive with his knowledge of trees and plants. I spent a day out with him and, back in May, I guess. And his knowledge was as great as anybody there. Thank you.
Any other comments?
All right. If we're moving away from the village administrator now, I had a comment, I've been getting complaints. I've been getting complaints about delays in the off-peak railroad passes for parking. Over three months ago, the Board of Trustees had passed a item relating to railroad passes that would not be good between 6:00 AM and 10:00 AM at railroad stations, but would be good at any other time on weekdays and always be good on the weekends. And the complaints I'm getting is that they haven't been available for people and they haven't been issued. And does anyone have any information on that?
I can discuss that. I sent an email around to the trustees saying that the resolution that we passed, I believe I mentioned this at a prior board meeting, did not appear to be economically in the best interest of the village. And candidly, the simple solution is to have a process similar to what we do now with the parking on the street with the police department. And I believe, because what happened is the resolution that the board was looking to do would cost the village $4,000 for changing and implementing the process, the computer process. And I believe that if this board wants to go ahead and implement a process where the village clerk issues a permit, and I would say this permit would be a different color than the one that is used for the railroad parking, that if an individual wants to use that permit to park anywhere between 12 and 6, 12 and night, whatever time they want, all we would have to do is go on the website, send an email to the police department. And when they go through, the police department would know that this individual has the permission to park there. The fundamental question that has to be issued by, answered by this board is how many occasions should that individual be able to park there before buying a train pass?
If, no, no, I don't, I don't think that's the question. This board passed an item. No trustee has a blue slip to stop the processing of that item. We passed the item to have these railroad passes issued for parking after 10:00 AM on weekdays and on weekends. No single trustee can stand in the way of enacting and implementing that.
Oh, I absolutely agree with you. And that is why I sent an email around to all of the trustees suggesting that that permit process go, but there would be no fee attached to it.
We passed a resolution.
Yeah.
We passed an item that should be implemented. It shouldn't be stopped by one trustee who has decided he has a better idea.
If you want to spend $4,000, that's fine. But that's the reason why I specifically sent an email around to all the trustees to reconsider the expenditure of money. And we brought it up.
You said that, go ahead, trust. Okay. You know, why didn't you send that email? Because I was kind of surprised, I didn't, I knew you were looking into it, but I didn't realize that it had been delayed this long. I mean, $4,000, considering all the expenditures that we approve, doesn't seem like a lot of money. And maybe there is a better, a lower way to do it, but for having residents go on the website or contact the police, I think it's an extra step that isn't really necessary. And having this permit would alleviate that.
I have another question, and I thought it was going to be discussed with the commissioner when you brought up the idea. Has it been analyzed as far as whether there is a better way than what we already voted on and passed? And I would think it may come into extra money being spent on enforcement if the, you know, they can no longer just check for the pass. So I'm not sure that this other plan would be saving money, but that would be something for the village staff to comment on.
Mr. Jackson, you want to comment to us?
Yes. When I heard that brought up at a meeting, we, we did look into it. For us to set up a program like the overnight would be more money. But the only, the issue I have is overnight parking is, is they're not paying for the tickets. And, and we also found out that many people who need permissions periodically need it early, it's not off-peak. If we have a lot of seniors in town that need to get chemo once or twice a month or other medical services and they go to New York City and they're leaving at 6, 7 in the morning. So we, we do, we do have a process now. And they're, they're leaving at 6:00, 7:00 in the morning. So we, we do, we do have a process now in place that if somebody calls, we verify their plate and we'll give them permission. If we think they're taking advantage of us, then we'll tell them to get a permit. But we, we, it's, many of the people we help are ones who are really in need. Probably just once or twice a month, just to get some type of medical service. And so that's why I was a little hesitant about making it off-peak. It's very hard to enforce too. If somebody parks there at 9:58, somebody complains, what do we do, you know? So I thought if, when it was brought to my attention, I, we probably can continue what we do. And, and if we feel that there's somebody's abusing it, we'll, 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 you know, we'll address it. We, we take phone calls now for all the reasons, so we probably can handle that. I, that's, I don't see that as an issue. If somebody emails us on our website, we'll, I'll make sure my lieutenants are looking every day for it. And if they send it to us, you know, and they accidentally get a ticket, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll send that to the court. So I think we can handle it. And I think this helps the people who really need it at top, from time to time in their lives.
So when the permits, it's, uh, help it easy, alleviate some of what you have to do? I mean, obviously if somebody's going into the city for chemo treatments, I mean, they could contact you or whatever to do that. But I think having the off-peak permit, people aren't calling or going, you know, calling the police department, going on the website just to, to go in for the day.
How many people, how many people are calling?
We maybe get two a day.
You can handle that easily.
I mean, it's two or three day the most and some days, you know.
You can monitor it.
Yes.
It's easy.
I think we're talking about completely different things here. I, I think we're talking about an exception for extenuating circumstances, which is, I, I think that's, you know, nice that that's being done, but that's completely different from what we talked about, an off-peak pass for seniors who want to go into the city and enjoy the afternoon in the city. And we did have a lot of discussion on it and we to Charlie's point, we voted on it, we approved the funds. I'm not hearing an alternative to that plan now. What I'm hearing is something different that we're doing. That's a, a nice thing. I don't know that probably most residents have no idea that they could call and aren't even thinking for their chemo that they could and the village would let them, but that's separate. I don't know if we want to let people know we're doing that, if we're doing it. But in the meantime, I, we, we passed this other off-peak pass, and I, I think we should go forward with what we voted on, not hearing a, an alternative. Your idea was, I understand your idea, but it doesn't seem that it was fleshed out or that there's any statement today that that that's something that the would be workable.
You can issue the permit without having a fee. It's the fee that is creating the problem. So if you want to just issue an off-peak pass from the clerk's office, all they have to do is print up a sticker. It's the fee that is the issue because it is costing the village a significant sum of money for no purpose. It's never a gain, it's, that's the problem. So if we want to just issue an off-peak permit, fine, go ahead and do that. Just that if, and we can trust our village residents to use it correctly. That if you apply to the village for an off-peak permit, all you do is you sign it up and you can get one.
Well, it's got to be distinguished from the regular permit. Or no one, when they go to check the cars, they won't know if it's early in the morning, if they have the proper permit.
Do it in the color.
So I don't, I mean, this is another idea that I, I didn't hear before this meeting, but is it Karen Altman who does the permits?
I think Irene is involved in it. Irene, Irene does it. Irene does it.
So I don't know if you want to speak to that, if in fact we can do a different color permit, we could do a trial one year without a fee, without spending the $4,000. And then.
So all the permits that are issued, they are very specific to if it's a parking lot as against railroad. So there's a code on there that says R for railroad. It tells you what, if it's not a boulevard, it, it has a code on there. In order for us to, our program is very specific because it's only tailored for these, all these parkings and railroad. In order for us to issue another permit for off-peak, we would have to create, as trustee Torino was saying, we would have to get our programmers to change the program in order to us to facilitate this new parking. And then we would call it off-peak or P or something, so that the police aides can identify what is this. So if somebody's there in peak hours when they shouldn't be because of the sticker, it's not so much the color of the sticker, because every year we change the sticker so that they can know that, oh, this one is expired and this person should not be here. It is more so the code that is on there and our system has, we have to get it programmed to facilitate, because there is no open, we can't just put a number in, because each program, each part, each parking space is allotted a specific code according to the program. So in order for us to get an off-peak, we'd have to again, go back to our programmers to say, we need this. And they, they'd said it was 4,000, over $4,000 to get that program in.
It's a special software.
Special software.
Yeah, and we, and we, and we knew this when we passed the resolution. I mean, Irene had, had mentioned that, that, you know, she had to get different software, get a different color permit, but we approved it.
Can I, do, do you mind if I say something, Darcy? And if I'm off base, stop me. Can we just buy, I mean, for our landscaper licensing, I just buy the decals from a printer. Can't we just buy railroad decals and maybe Nicole could keep a spreadsheet of who is asking for them? And I don't know if they're going to charge a fee rather than do you have to put it in the system? But maybe that's a finance thing that has to be done.
So for each parking, there is a fee. The first thing we'd have to know is what's the fee, because then that is program indoors. So so we get to change it each year, but that's also a part of the program to say, what is the fee that will be charged? If there is no fee, then.
Can we just buy decals?
We can just get decals then and.
A certain color.
We won't even need to go through us because we manage the funding. If there's no fund.
So the program was designed for a specific purpose and, and we're altering the original design, but, but what the village clerk has suggested, I think is a good idea, you just keep a paper log.
Decal, the same way we do it for the dumps, the dump permits, where we just, it's just there and, but it's something that the, first of all, the commissioner would have to be, you know, the aides would have to be able to identify the parking meter. It's, they, this, they shouldn't be here, so they would need to know.
Right, get a specific, specific color.
Yes.
And they, it, we could get them probably within a week. They come pretty quickly.
Peak, so we know that this is what it is and during peak hours, they shouldn't be there.
Right, so we can, we can implement the resolution and probably forego the majority of that expense by just switching our methodology and designing something a little more quickly than we're going to move it, and the commissioner can okay it and keep a, keep a paper log and even, even a little access database doesn't have to be a, a big programming effort, I don't think. Let's, let's.
If I, if I can make a comment, I'm listening to everything. I don't want to overthink this, but I acknowledge that we passed it, no doubt. But I agree with Mary and listening to Karen and the, and Commissioner. Why don't we try this on a trial basis and see how it works out? And then if it doesn't work out, we can pay the $4,000 towards doing a change control with the software company. So I think we're overthinking it a little bit, but let's give it a trial basis and see how it goes. Commissioner, are you comfortable with that?
Well, that's, to clarify, I heard two different things. You could also just keep the records. Would it have to be no fee to do this? Or could we stay with what we decided before?
I think we said would be a $50 fee for the year.
Yeah, let's stay with everything we already voted on, except that expenditure of money, we don't need to go forward with right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So it'll be like with the landscapers.
See how it goes for you, like Mary suggested, and if we have to change it, we change it. That's, but I do acknowledge that we did pass it originally.
But we'll have senior landscapers.
So it's not actually a trial though, because it's all passed and we're actually just in the office doing it differently than anticipated.
Yeah.
Exactly.
We're implementing it.
Right.
We're implementing it without money.
Thank you, trustee Kelly, for bringing this up.
Thanks, Bruce. Okay, moving on.
Is there going to be a fee?
Yeah, same fee we talked, we agreed on.
Yes, because what my concern is, we are starting to see people coming back. And I just, one of my concerns is will be without a fee, it might cause overcrowding. And we do have people who work afternoons and, you know, and they pay, and so I don't know if they want to, and they might not get a spot. So I believe a fee might work out and then we could go from there. And also we can adjust it on the fly, but I'm, I'm a little concerned because we are seeing a drastic increase in usage of the railroad stations.
People are going back to work.
Yes, and you know, especially in the middle of the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays is getting pretty busy.
From Tuesday to Thursday, it's more crowded.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, let's move on to agenda items. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? On agenda items. Yes, I just said that. Sorry. We're talking about agenda items now. Comments at this time are only to be made regarding agenda items. Please step up to the podium and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Betsy Andromedes, 116 Newmarket Road. Mr. Mayor and trustees, I read the, the agenda and I saw that a lot of people on the executive staff haven't been, gotten a raise in four years. I don't know if four years is what it's been, and I know it's been kicked around a lot for the past couple of months and pushed off and pushed off. I hope you guys will really consider this. You guys all know how much we rely on these people. Me, this year volunteering for the mayor's committee, I never realized how much I've worked with all of you guys and especially Karen Altman, problem solver with the stickers. But the dedication of these people, we, we all see it firsthand. You guys see it more than anybody. This isn't a nine to five or 8:30 to 4:30 job. It's a 24/7 job. And, you know, they, we can ask them questions. They get back to us right away and we're just volunteers. They're here for everybody in the village. And I think these people are what make Garden City one of the nicest places to live in New York, if not the East Coast. So I hope you guys will really consider this and push this along because I, you know, I'm kind of shocked that it haven't gotten a raise in a long time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for saying that. I support that as well. We have a great team. I'm very pleased with all the performance and I can't say enough about them and their dedication. And they deserve it. And now's our opportunity to take care of them.
Excellent team. Any, any persons in the audience on agenda items only, agenda items, please. It's got to be on the agenda.
Good evening, everyone. Bob Ors, 28 Grove. I don't know if this is an agenda item or not, because I think the 18 was taken off the agenda for tonight for the fire engines. Right, this, the only thing I'd like to know about it is that they want three fire engines. I'd like to know, because I'm a person who likes to, has specifics. What type of fire engines we're talking about? Are they all the same? And once they're built, are they going to be distributed to each firehouse? And my last question is, does somebody take a measurement to make sure they're going to fit in the bays of each firehouse? Because I don't want to see this edge, edge me right again.
I think they're pretty smart.
Uh, yes, so to your first question, they would be identical. That's the point of this project as we presented it is to have uniformity across.
What type, what type they're going to be? A hybrid or a pumper or?
It'd be a standard engine, so we'd be looking to create three first-line engines that would be strategically placed throughout the village. There'd be one engine at every firehouse in the first-line service that would respond to all alarms.
And they fit in each, each of the firehouses.
So based on the, they fit in two of them currently. We are waiting on the proposal that Giuseppe talked about. They were doing some studies this week to see how high we can get the bay doors specifically. We have an estimate, but we wanted to get the number down to a finite number.
And there's no, no way at this particular point in time to take the existing trucks and upgrade or retrofit them?
So the, just so everyone's aware, the current fleet is similar, I'll say. They have a similar pump panel, similar layout, similar equipment location. But due to the various ages and due to the various manufacturers and vendors, there are differences. And there are, you know, there are similarities, but there are differences amongst the fleet. The engine that's currently going to be replaced out at 14, Station 2, that is beyond reproach. It's beyond repair. It's beyond locating parts to replace it. That needs to get replaced. It's past its life expectancy. The other engines, yes, can they be upgraded? Sure, it's just at what cost? So it's an operational perspective as well as a financial perspective. And you'll get them to be a similar apparatus. Again, they won't be uniform. That's the key. And that's why we're presenting this information to the board tonight to standardize and have uniformity across our first-line engines.
Now, right now, all the bays are filled, aren't they?
Correct.
All right, so what do you, how, what are you going to get rid of in order to put these new ones in? And what, what's going to happen to them?
Two of the engines would be sold back, whether it's to the manufacturer or to a private sale to recuperate some of the funds. And we'd be looking to maintain one of the apparatus. And the apparatus that we'd be looking to maintain currently fits at Station 2 without any changes, as well as bringing us back up to four engines in our fleet. We used to have four for many years. We went down to three about six, seven years ago. Now we're looking to bring back to have four. So if one goes out for repairs or anything that, you know, has to get done to the apparatus, we maintain having three in first-line service.
Any idea what we might be able to get for them in order to offset this cost?
So it depends. The rig that's going to have to go out, that's the oldest one that's going to have to get replaced. Those funds have already been set aside. That's going to fetch us anywhere from $20,000 to $40,000, depending on the bidder. The other apparatus would go anywhere from 100 to 150,000 based on, again, the bidder or who's looking to. Again, it could be more, it could be less, just depends on who's looking to acquire.
Considering each one's about a million dollars.
Yeah, but if, looking at the one that's going to be anywhere from 100, 150, a couple of years ago, that was for, I don't have the exact number in front of me, it was about $650,000. In that time, and that was purchased in 2015. In 2023, one app, one engine apparatus is going to be just shy of a million dollars.
I just hope the board takes in all this, especially as the saying goes in, in woodworking and so on, is to measure twice and cut once. And hopefully that this engine shows up and we're not putting gasoline on the side in order to slide.
No, absolutely not. And again, I would just like to take this time to publicly thank the engine committee that's spent the better part of the last seven months speaking with numerous vendors, looking at all the scenarios that go into play of creating an apparatus that fits the needs of this village. So I would just like to probably thank them for their time and commitment. So yes, no stone was left unturned.
Let me respond to, let me respond to a number of your questions. One of which is that a fire engine is a custom piece of apparatus. They have an extremely long lead time. And there is no ability that if one of our units gets damaged in a car accident, that you can go to either Hertz or Avis and pick up another one. The protocol that the engine committee went through was arduous. There are essentially seven ma, major manufacturers. The fire committee did in fact, or the engine committee did in fact go to, I'm not sure if they went to all of them, but they went to most of the manufacturers. And in fact, the one that is being sought on this issue, they actually went to, I believe, more than once in order that the apparatus and the equipment that goes on it is selected correctly. Now, an interesting thing about fire trucks, and that is while they're all being placed in three different firehouses, they might not necessarily have the same number of clock hours. Some may be used more often than others. They then can be rotated in and out. But the most important thing about fire engines is that the personnel that use them know exactly what to do, when to do it, and it has to be muscle memory. When you're going to a fire, red lights and sirens, and you know that somebody is in peril, when you respond, you have to overcome your heart beating and racing and hope that your training is correct. And you don't say, well, on this truck, it was here, in that truck, it was someplace else. So by buying three engines. So by buying three engines at the same time, there are a number of other cost-saving account issues that should be addressed in this particular case, and that is there is already monies in the budget for one engine. There should be monies put in the budget in future years for a second engine. The purpose of bonding this amount of money is because of an administrative requirement that you can't place an order unless you have the money in your account. So the purpose of bonding, which is what has been on the agenda, is that, yes, we can place the order. Some of the money is already in hand to reduce the amount to the bond by the next two or three years when the engines actually physically arrive. More of the money will be set aside for it. But there is a substantial cost savings that by getting all of this equipment at the same time, it puts our order in a higher priority because engines right now are somewhere, depending on the manufacturer, between two and three years out. So this is a process that affords the village the best bang for the buck, the best ability for training. Because once the training facility is built and all of the firemen go there, not only ours, but other villages, they too have the ability to train with us and learn the protocols. Because when the chief tells you about all of the calls that they go on, a lot of them are mutual aid. So in this particular case, while it seems like a lot of money, candidly, it is not. Because the amount of the savings that has been worked through by the fire committee, and I went through their book on what they chose, page by page, as to what was necessary, why it was necessary, and how this process is most effective for the purpose of enhancing the fire matics of the department. One of the key criteria that was worked out through the fire safety committee was the need for uniformity of equipment. This gives us that opportunity, and it will be an effective use of the village resources. Because the price of the fire equipment is going up significantly, we have the ability to lock in the cost now instead of the ten, fifteen, or twenty percent that the fire committee has seen being charged other departments by virtue of the delay and trying to get equipment in the future.
One quick question. If this is custom-made, are all three made at the same time, or is one made and then the next one is made six months later and so on and so on?
We have been told by the vendor, sorry, sorry about that. We've been told by the vendor they will be made at the same time.
Same time, okay.
It went, one analogy, Mr. Orzoz, that the some of the firemen have shared with me. It's kind of like having three cars, but one's a Mercedes, one's a Chevy, and one's a Mustang. So they all have different attributes that you have to learn right now. So by having well standardized, and let's say we call it a Mercedes for now, we can act a lot quicker. And for me, it's a critical initiative and it's more about money. I think it's a matter of public safety and it could be a matter of saving lives. And as I mentioned before, fires double in size within thirty seconds. So, you know, I think we have to take that in consideration when we move, hopefully move forward with this.
It's not that, it's just that I, I just wanted to get.
No, I understand. You want clarification. Your questions were good.
That's all, just information.
No, I know. Thank you.
Think that my microphone's dying, but if I just may follow up to the commissioner's points on the process that our committee went through, we met with numerous vendors countless times, really left no stone untoned and just to, unturned, and just to kind of give everybody an understanding of the timeframe of delivery. And, you know, the reason we chose this particular vendor, just at a high level, is in regards to the build time, as that was mentioned, we're currently locked in at thirteen months. If we weren't locked in, our vendor would be already at fifteen months. The other vendors we met with are two-plus years, three years minimum, two and a half years, two-plus years. Also, our warranty is longer on this particular vendor than the other vendors that we met with. And as has been mentioned several times here, the pricing is just going up significantly. So if we are to come back and request more funds in the future for additional apparatus, it would just be at a higher cost to the village. So just again, want to give everybody information that they need to make that decision, and we'll go from there.
Chief, my understanding is that the purchase of the three fire engines at one time affords us a savings of eight hundred thousand dollars?
Roughly, yes.
Okay, it's a significant savings.
Correct. If we buy all three, taking into consideration the funds already set aside for.
But I also agree with Deputy Mayor O'Brien. It's not about the money, really. It's about fire safety, about saving lives. Having a fire department that's responsive a hundred percent of the time. And that's why I think, based on the Village Fire Safety Committee, what they've come up with in terms of the recommendations, it's very clear to me that it's about the apparatus, it's about the training, it's about standardization, right, and making sure the firehouses are equipped to handle all these pieces of apparatus and also handle the volunteers. It's really important. I think fire safety is the number one issue in the village for me.
Look, from my perspective, I completely agree. Fire safety is my number one concern. I do completely agree that our operational effectiveness will increase with this. I think we're at a good spot. But as I've mentioned several times at board meetings and conversations with all of you, there's always room for improvement, and this helps us improve, truly does. In regards to the financing, the reason we provided all that information is, yes, it is a, you know, a decent amount of change at this time. It really is. But over, you know, a twenty-year life expectancy, it's cheaper than if we come back in a couple of years and request additional funds. But, yeah, it's up to the board to decide. We'll make do with what we have and.
I just wanted to ask a chief question.
It was an agenda item that somebody brought up.
Said, all right, Terry, I was going to ask the chief. Again, we're, tire board obviously is concerned about fire safety. And I, we all appreciate the work you've done to price out these engines that are very much needed. You had mentioned that all three would be ready approximately the same time if we went through with that. My concern with that is what if there's a defect? A particular defect in this type of engine? And that all three that you've got would have this defect?
Valid concern. When we receive an apparatus that's completed off the line, as they say, it goes through weeks of testing and preparation. So it's not just that the fleet would come in and then we'd be, all right, turning over the other engines that we have currently. It'd be a couple of weeks of training, apparatus familiarization, ensuring that everything is actually working properly. And if not, it goes back to the manufacturer for completions. In the event that there is a recall, which does happen every now and then, very rarely, it's covered, goes out to the repair, and ours is luckily right around the block, and that fix will be made.
Yeah, but again, it's, it's, it's all three coming at one time. I mean, would it be possible to get maybe two? And then eventually get, you know, see how they are and, and work with what you have right now, getting the two?
We'll make do with whatever we have, as you're aware.
I know.
In regards to getting two or one or whatever it may be, we can't guarantee that uniformity because, again, because of this delay in manufacturing, as well as, you know, where we are on the list of rigs being created by a vendor, there might be differences in that apparatus, which then defeats the purpose of uniformity. So that's our concern. Having all three at the same time ensures uniformity, standardization. As I mentioned earlier, are the rigs similar now? Absolutely. Similar layout, similar equipment location, similar pump panels as best as they can be given to different manufacturers. That's what we can basically ensure if we do wait a couple of years between manufacturing a new fleet.
You know, as you probably know, I insure a couple of fire departments, so I discuss with them, obviously. And we, this fire safety committee has been of utmost importance to this board, obviously to the village, to get these trucks, to get the training facility. And, you know, I think the committee has done very, very well. But their input was that, I guess, getting three in one shot, they, they were had concern, that they would have concern that maybe you'd have this defect and it'd be in all three trucks. And then what do you do then?
So we'd have at least one engine still in reserve. We have another apparatus that currently can pump. And for those of you that aren't familiar with the terminology, that means actually flow water and extinguish a fire. So even in a worst-case scenario of all three having a defect and having to be out of service for a significant amount of time, we'd still have two apparatus that can flow water, which is what happens now when one rig goes out of service. We still have two engines.
Right.
So we'd be down to two. And then we can look into, you know, if it was something that serious, we'd look into trying to acquire a spare rig from somebody for a temporary amount of time.
From a financial perspective, I'd say, I'm not in favor of this. And I said that to you on the phone. We haven't talked about the fire facility yet, so we're also talking about a lot of money. And it's easily said, well, we can just bond it. You're still going to pay it back. So we're putting a lot of money behind this, this one initiative, World for Safety and things like that. But it's not unlimited pot of money, so we've got to figure out what to prioritize, what not prioritize, in my opinion.
I completely understand and respect that, which is why we've had those conversations, why I try to give you as much of the information, so. Absolutely.
And I, if I could, a couple of comments, since I was the fire commissioner, we worked all this out. We had about, what, twenty-eight subject matter experts, the chiefs, former chiefs.
Take, yeah, there's a lot of people.
Yeah, a lot of people. And we worked, I think, seven months on it. And it was unanimous. And this, this included Garden City Fire Chiefs, our excellent team who are here tonight, former chiefs, firefighters from New York City, some chiefs, Long Island people, Long Island, yeah, and construction people. So we all, they all unanimously said we have to, we have a need and we have to have uniform trucks. It was unanimous. And those are from people who know the business. So on budget, my recommendation is we can lower other budgets to make this budget work because it could be a matter of life in, in a tough situation. So that's my comment. But we worked so hard on it. We put the fire committee together, and I hate to see it's, you know, stall at this point.
I have one question, and I when will we find out when, whether it will fit in the firehouse that is being worked on now? Because that was something I assumed we knew.
We have to do a few probes. As per the structural engineer, he's requesting a couple of probes in the bond and steel beams that are in the building. I've discussed that with Mr. Baroni, and we're going to have our team do a couple of probes in the building just so we can verify that the number is correct as far as what we need as far as the height. I believe the height you requested was eleven-four, if I'm mistaken.
That's the tallest in our current fleet right now. And that was just a number to work at to say, okay, this is the highest we're going to need it.
So we're shooting for, anything above eleven-four?
So I thought the engines fit into that firehouse now, but this, the specifications on these three new engines may not?
Two, two of our engines in our current fleet do. The newest one does not due to the, the size of these apparatus just getting bigger over time. It's unfortunately what happens because unfortunately, the fire service, we're not just responding to fire alarms. Unfortunately, over the last twenty years or so, the scope has expanded significantly, responding to gas calls, leaks, elevator rescues, carbon monoxide calls, you know, extrication calls. So unfortunately, the equipment that we carry as well has expanded. Also, the water in the tank has expanded from five hundred gallons to seven hundred fifty gallons, which increases the size of the trucks. So unfortunately, across the scope, the rig's size is just getting bigger. It's not decreasing. That's across engines, rescues, ladders. And unfortunately, Station Two was built a hundred years ago, almost ninety-something years ago. And fortunately, that was built for apparatus that was built back in the thirties.
The antique that's in the count.
Actually, yeah, the antique that we currently have as, you know, a parade piece that sits in the station was built for that particular station.
But I thought two of our current engines fit in the house, so.
No, they do. The one that's currently stationed there.
Not that old.
No, they're twenty, twenty and fourteen years old.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I think, certainly I just got handed papers, so I'll let Bruce speak, but I think obviously we're going to have to revisit this at the next meeting.
Yeah, without a doubt. One other question, Chief, sorry to.
I'm happy to, as I mentioned in my emails, I'm happy to talk whenever.
What would be the shelf life of these trucks? Are you getting this?
Expected is twenty years.
Okay.
Wear and tear over time.
Yeah.
I, again, I'm not going to say it's absolutely twenty years, but it's generally, we forecast it as twenty years.
And that's, again, my concern with the three at once is that their shelf life is twenty years. Just, you know, worst-case scenario, probably none of us are going to be around in twenty years. But, but you.
Speak for yourself.
You will be.
Up to be in Florida by then.
Yeah, what, then twenty years, you know, I guess the same big expenditure and could be an emergency expenditure if, you know, the shelf lives were.
It absolutely can, and but we're talking about something twenty years down the line. I need to look at the immediate, the short term and the medium term.
I know you, I know you are, but I just, for the long-term, I think about that. Well, I understand the inquiry that you make about defects. If that logic continues, then nobody would actually buy a fleet of cars, whether they police, whether they are state contract. So theoretically, nobody should buy any more than one of anything.
I'm not saying not buy any, I'm saying maybe the end of it.
Well, since they have, and I took the liberty of going on to their website, researching their information, it comes with a fifteen, fifteen-year warranty. And as the chief mentioned, before the unit is turned over, it goes for a shakedown cruise for weeks. And considering the history of the company that they are intending to purchase the item from, there hasn't been, at least from my research, any difficulty with a defect that would poison the well for all three units. So while it sounds valid on its face, under scrutiny, the objective of implementing fire safety, I believe, is the issue that is most imperative here. The bonding is so that the order can be done and the trucks purchased. The funding of it is not until they deliver it years away. To answer the question of whether the unit will fit into the garage, while that is an interesting issue, the actual opening is eleven-four, but, and this is the large but, everybody wants to have a little bit more space. And when Mr. Givinelli indicates that there is the probe is because the nature of the construction of the building in years past put in a concrete area below the beam. Of course, I will have to defer to the mayor because he doesn't like me to practice architecture. But I believe that from all of the work that has been done so far, we can certainly, we're not buying the units tomorrow. This is merely the funding. Because there is a process that once you get the funding in place, you actually have to go to the factory for the mock-up. And that will not occur for, it's my understanding from my prior conversations, and you guys can fill me in, it's a couple of months down the road when you actually do the final specs on it.
So it is, it's a, I'd say a couple of weeks, we'd be trying to expedite this as quickly as possible, given that we have a price lock as well as a time lock in place because unfortunately, they're not going to hold it forever. So we would try to get our committee out to the vendor's manufacturing plant as quickly as possible to do the final prep and walkthrough and basically of all the specs, bring it back, have it signed off, and then go from there. And then, just to follow up on your point, Commissioner, you're a hundred percent correct. We would, the timeframe would not start until we signed on the bottom line. And they would not expect payment until they deliver one, two, or three engines.
And by that time, Mr. Givinelli with probe in hand will tell you that it is in fact going to fit. Yes, because I was in the fire department when the mayor backed the ladder truck into the garage and forgot. That was a little bit. That was a little bit too tight. So I would not want to have that done on my watch.
Can I just comment? Just to round out the discussion a bit. The reason this is on tonight's agenda is because when Chief Perrin and I, I've been asking the, the department for these numbers for a while, when I got them, since we're embarking on capital very soon, I suggest why don't we just put it to the capital? And then the chief made me aware of the price lock and the timing issue. So it doesn't help me to tell the board in July, by the way, we could have saved eight hundred thousand dollars if we bought these in April or May. So that's why it's on here tonight. If you pass the bond resolution to trustee Trino's point, you, you can't order these trucks without the funding being in place. It doesn't mean that treasurer Wu is going to borrow the funds in April. It means that the board has given authorization for a funding source. Those bonds might not be issued for a year. The earliest you could possibly place this order is thirty days from tonight, which would be according to bond counselor, because there's a permissive referendum period. So within the next thirty days, I don't know if Mr. Givernelli or Mr. Barone can come with the height issue, but it's not, you're not buying them tonight. You're, you're authorizing a bond so that purchase can proceed. So primarily, yes, this is a safety issue. Secondarily, the chief points to the other facets of the conversation, that aspects of conversation regards to, I think it's a three hundred ninety day delivery time, which is better than two or three year delivery time. So there are other things tied to this timing besides the cost, but ultimately, from the financing side, it's a business decision. If you're going to buy the truck anyway now, and a second truck in three months, the cost is going to go up. So it's, that's why it's on tonight's agenda.
But we, if we vote on the sixteenth, then we can get all this locked in, correct?
On the.
Sixth, the next meeting.
Next one's the second.
Oh, second, I'm sorry.
So I'm not sure.
Yeah, if we can vote on the, on the second then, and everybody submit their questions that they have ahead of time to the chief, that would be terrific. That way we can move ahead and at least make a decision.
This doesn't obligate you to spending the money.
I'm sorry?
This, this does not obligate you to spending three point three million dollars.
No, I understand it. I'm clear on that. Thank you.
It just gets the clock ticking. So if the chief, because even tonight, you haven't been clear about exactly when that cutoff of the price lock is, is it April, May? When we talked, it was June was too late. So if it's three weeks away, times of the essence, we were a stretch a week. I'm not sure what the timing is.
The vendor is giving us ample time with this price lock as it is. They have made us aware that it will not be in place much longer, given that their prices have actually already increased. So I'd say no later than four weeks from now would be when they tell us, okay, that price that we gave you is expired. Here's the new one, even if we just go with one.
I have one other question. Our budget now is, I'm telling for right, it's around three million out of our sixty something million dollar budget. Is that correct? For the fire department, the fire department budget.
The operating budget is approximately two million dollars.
Two million. Wow, that's low.
With most of it being hydro rental fees.
Yeah, so I think that, which is a couple of things, you know, when you put the budget together, well, one question, is there, is there a budget now that could be moved over? That isn't being used. And second, is there budget that can be moved over that isn't being used right now? And second question is, why don't we give the fire department an increase in budget next year that they may or may not have to use? And lower some of the other budgets that are not as critical for, for this type of situation.
So first of all, throughout the year, when we bring capital projects to the board, feel like wearing a chin strap. We have, like the, the repoint this building was a one point five million dollar budget amount, and we use about one third of that. So trustee Deegan knows, because we have these conversations, Mrs. Wu and I have these conversations. We have borrowed from other projects, capital projects, they don't need the funds. So so I don't know, like, if you pass the vote for the bond authorization tonight, it doesn't mean you have to borrow.
I understand. I was just curious.
So we could, we could, we could go through.
You don't need to do it. I get it.
Right. We go through the capital projects and see what else is going on. The other thing is, is that this is a pivot, this is a pivot point for the department to, to strategize around standardization of equipment.
Yeah.
Is a new way of operating. They're going in a different direction, which to the chief's points is more efficient, better training, blah, blah, blah. The, the one thing I would think might be appropriate reaction to that from a budget standpoint is not to wait twenty years or twenty one years to buy three new trucks, but to actually in the annual budget to put a small reserve away that's, that's committed to the future purchase of fire apparatus. So so you're, you're putting fifty thousand, seventy five thousand, a hundred thousand dollars a year for some future purses, purses just for fire apparatus. So that would ease future boards and fire chiefs reliance on buying three trucks at a time financially for the village, which would be much more expensive in twenty years. And it was a third point, but I lost it.
I, I dig you as an excellent point. But another question, I throw back you, what are you looking at it all in cost for the fire training facility?
So the fire training facility, which you alluded to, right now, the, the fire department has placed in their capital budget, one point two million dollars. And that is for the nine containers that build the training, training facility on the, on the training facility site and other items you need, such as the water main, fire hydrant, lighting, electricity. Mr. Barone has designed a training location, which has been approved by the fire department, has been approved by DPW. It's actually, actually improves our operation, the way we're laying it out. And I believe that, and we also have, I think about one point two to one point five million dollars of, of concrete that was bonded already. So it's not all new money. But I think the cost, John, if you correct me, is approximately five point one million, that includes the one point two. And some of that is already bonded. So it would be probably about about three million, three point something million dollars of new money. But it's about five point one all in with the containers, with all the utilities, with the concrete base, the repositioning, the DPW stuff, the security, the cameras, everything. That's pre bidding, of course. Could be less, could be slightly more.
And do we have, and I know the word savings is a really bad term to use, with regard to initially firehouse two was budgeted for about.
The original budget amount from about four years ago, we had a placeholder of seven point five million. But then there was a redesign because of the equipment. I forget the exact details right now, but it was projected, even though we never got to finish the concept, it was projected to be more than ten to almost eleven million dollar range, maybe as high as twelve. But that was, we never got to the square footage cost because we changed direction. But so there are, I don't know if you call them savings, but you, you can, you can repurpose. So you're, those monies that were, that were targeted toward that expenditure will probably, it'll be greatly reduced in the redesigns going on now. So, you know, it's just another ingredient to the puzzle, but.
You're saving millions of dollars.
Millions.
From, from the original budget.
Probably six, eight, nine dollars.
Millions. So again, I think it's about safety. I think it's about making sure that we have the best fire department. Again, I'm, I'm in favor of this resolution.
So my suggestion is we voted on it on the second. I'm sorry, I made that mistake on the next meeting. But that everybody submit their questions so that they're, you know, can make an educated decision to.
Well, I, I think Deputy Mayor, also, this report's been out for over a year, I believe, almost two years.
Yeah.
And the Village Fire Safety Committee did a tremendous analysis. It's on the village website. People should read it.
I'm in agreement, but I think some people.
I went to the Madigan funeral. I saw the Alcott House burned down. That changed my whole way of thinking. And I have to tell you, I've, I've lived with the firemen for two years. We went over this with all the firemen, both volunteer and paid firefighters. And we discussed all the issues very candidly, that sometimes heated discussions. But we came to a resolution. We came to an agreement. The plan was to standardize the equipment, improve the firehouses, and improve our training. Those are the things we talked about. Those are the things that are in the report. And I think that's what we should act on, because it's about saving lives. I, I appreciate the idea of saving money. I'm all for that. But there's a business decision that has to be made here. The decision is to spend the money. We're going to get, we're saving money in other areas, and we need the apparatus. Mayor.
I'm in agreement. Just that they, it was moved to discussion tonight. So I think we should vote on it next meeting. But I'm in agreement with what you said.
I can vote on it tonight. I don't have to wait for the next meeting. I'd like to make a comment, Tom.
Well, if, if everyone's ready to vote, I, I think that some people wanted to digest some of the information. So if they need that time, I'm fine with that. But if we can vote on it, but by this.
Okay.
Vote on it by the second.
I want to make my point, just what the mayor said, that, yeah, we're all aware of the fire safety committee. I attended a number of the meetings and the presentations that trustee Torino did an excellent presentation on it. Obviously, we're all, all were concerned if, if the Madigan fire. That's how this whole discussion came about. What we're questioning tonight is the purchase of the three fire trucks, not some of the other things, although trustee Deegan brought up a point, good point about the training facility. We wanted to do that. We still want to do that. But in terms of, you know, the fire trucks, it's, it's getting the three at the same time, and we need just to look at that. Okay? And I think waiting till the more it's second is, you know, not the worst thing in the world.
And I think in the meantime, if people still have questions and need clarification, if they could send questions as soon as they can to Commissioner Torino and Chief Perrin, that could expedite and get the information back so they can make an educated decision.
Oh, absolutely. And Chief Perrin has been excellent in answering the questions we have tonight. Appreciate that.
Which we appreciate.
As I mentioned in my email, I gave everyone my cell number, my email address, happy to talk face to face over the phone, via email. Any questions anyone may have, please send them my way. Happy to discuss it.
There, there is one other thing that you should probably know. This is not my air of expertise. Mary Darcy might want to kick in on this. I wish I knew this exactly, but if you do wait the two weeks and we only have four weeks to make a decision, the bond resolution can be reworded, I understand, so that we could word it such that we were putting cash from surplus now. And when the funds are, when the bond comes through, we place the surplus. In other words, you can create a funding source and, and order it based on the fact that you've put village cash behind it versus the bond resolution being mature enough to act upon. So that's, that's, that's bond council thing. It's not my air expertise, but I think we've done it before for other projects. I would leave that to Irene or Darcy to explain. In other words, where you have to write in the bond, you have specifically say, we're going to use our own cash now and replenish it back with the bond. Otherwise, you can't, you can't decide later to replenish with the bond. If you put the cash in, the bond's useless in that regard.
Garcia, are you familiar with that? If not, it's okay.
Paid the money ahead of time, and then when we bonded, it was repaid. I'm not sure if we then have a year to pay this fund back. There are some rules that are there that if you loan monies from one fund to another, it has to be paid back within the year. There are stipulations. So, but it was done and it was repaid within the timeframe, so it can be done.
It does give you flexibility, considering the timeframes we're up against now and the fact that the board wants.
Provide all that information to us. Provide all the dates. You provide the dates that we have to act.
This is good. This is good to know. Thank you.
Thank you, chief, really.
By the way, Ralph's an ex-fireman.
Thank you all for the time and consideration.
Ten years, ten and a half years.
Ten years.
He lets me know all the time.
Are you going to train him?
I don't think we have that much time.
I don't think you could train Ralph. Any comments on agenda items, please? Anybody on Zoom?
Yes, hi. It's Rich Correio, Meadbrook Road. Good evening, everybody. Not, not to beat a dead horse, but what, um, what is, two questions. What is the company that we're looking to purchase from and related question, I, I guess, how do we know, like, how do we know we're getting, I'm a layman on this, beyond a layman on this, but how do we know we're getting the best equipment? And, you know, the best value, the best bang for the buck? Can, can you maybe explain, you know, A, the company that we're currently looking at, and then B, sort of the thinking process and, and the process behind making sure we're going to get the, you know, the best equipment for the money?
Absolutely. So the vendor we're looking to go with is Marion. They've been around for over a hundred years, specifically in regards to fire trucks since the early nineteen sixties. So they've been around for quite some time. In regards to the equipment that will be going on to the truck, it'd be very similar to the actual equipment we have currently that's being utilized throughout the, the fleet. Different types of force entry equipment, hoses, adapters. I mean, I could literally go through a whole list, which we've, you know, printed up and prepared and priced out with various vendors. Essentially, in regards to ensuring, how do we get our, you know, I believe the quote, correct me if I was bang for our buck, was basically utilizing multiple vendors, speaking through to numerous manufacturers, both of equipment as well as the apparatus itself. Also, speaking to other departments that have utilized specific equipment in the past, as well as our familiarization with particular types of apparatus, equipment that we've utilized. It's an ever grow, excuse me, ever evolving process. You know, unfortunately, there's a saying in the fire service, you know, we have two hundred years of history impeded, unimpeded by progress. If there's something that can be done better, more efficiently, especially in regards to equipment or an approach to a particular type of call, we'll try that out. We'll try a particular type of equipment. We'll do a test run with it. We're not just going to buy it and throw it on our trucks. So a lot of the equipment that we ask for or purchase or acquire, it's gone through a trial period. We're not just going to, you know, for lack of a better term, trial by fire here. It's going to be tested in a training environment and then on particular types of calls. And then once it meets the satisfaction of the fire council, it's then implemented into our fleet. So from both end, uh, equipment perspective as well as apparatus, it's not just, uh, we're going to walk onto a dealer's lot and say, you know what? I like this one. It's shiny. It's bright. It's, there's a lot of behind the scenes activity that goes into it, a lot of research, a lot of comparisons, and, you know, cost is a consideration as well.
I guess, I guess my, my concern would be if, if we're at the point where we're testing it out, we've already purchased it. Right?
I'm sorry, the apparatus?
Right.
No, so just again, a little more background. The engine committee that has decided after meeting with numerous vendors to go with this particular vendor, Marion, they have gone to other departments that have Marion rigs in their fleet and have gone and tested them out, tried them, seen what can be done, what would work best for us, what can be changed. So there has been a trial and error period with the apparatus itself. We're not just going through a binder and saying, okay, you know what? I like this one. Based on the information they've gathered over their investigation, they've collected that information, reviewed it, and then based on what vendors can provide, they go to various sites to review an apparatus that has been made and see, okay, do we like this particular apparatus, the features that it provides, the ease of operation, the ease of driving it, things like that. So there is a familiarity with this particular apparatus that the committee who made this recommendation does have after their investigation.
And, and the city was, um, this is a committee of firemen or, I'm sorry, I just don't know which committee you're referring to.
Yes. So this is an engine committee put together by the fire department. It's made up of people with numerous years of experience in the department, many of which are ex-chiefs, all of which are chauffeurs on various apparatus. So there is a familiarity with engine operations, apparatus placement, engine pump operations, as well as members of our committee who have been on apparatus committees in the past. So they are familiar with numerous vendors, what questions to ask, what to look for, how to put together an apparatus that will fit the needs of the department and the village residents. So that's the committee in particular I'm talking about.
Thank you, chief.
Any other calls? Move on. Let's continue with tonight's regular Board of Trustees meeting. If you approve of the minutes of the previous Board of Trustees meetings, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February second, twenty twenty three board meeting? Second. All in favor? Let's move on to the formal agenda. On the formal agenda this evening is the appointment of Stanley J. Carey as the superintendent of Water and Sew Operations effective February twenty one, twenty twenty three, where upon civil service approval for the balance of the official year ending on April third, twenty twenty three, at a salary of a hundred sixty five thousand dollars. Do I have a motion to approve this appointment? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is Mr. Carey here? He's not here, right?
No, he's not. No, he's not.
The next item on the agenda is for the village to apply for a section 211 waiver for Stanley Carey. As superintendent of Water and Sew Operations. Do we have a motion for this item?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We move on to the consent calendar now. Is there anyone that would like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
No, we have number three.
Number three? Number three or number four? No.
Number three.
Six, six. The second.
Unless they've changed.
Oh, yeah, they changed it. Okay. Got it.
This is the item.
This is the item that I asked be put on the the agenda. And it has to do with the village compensation, the village's compensation of the executive staff. Previously in August. Of 2022, I circulated information with regard to. A request that the trustees review the compensation of. The executive staff. That issue has continued to be adjourned and ignored. And as. I have the right, I put a resolution on the board. And submitted documentation to all of the trustees with regard to the proposed compensation for the executive staff. That included the date of appointment of each of the individuals, the last salary review, which was somewhere between. 2018, 2019, and the beginning of 2020. The years in tenure, current salary, and the proposed salary as of today's date. With regard to that documentation. Also included was the BLS, which is the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Which denoted the degree to which the salaries that were paid. Were eroded over the years that has not been addressed by the board. It is unquestionable that the village has a great executive staff. All of us have had the opportunity. And taken it upon ourselves to either email or call the executive staff at night. On the evenings, over the weekends, and have gotten a response. I believe that absent the efforts of the executive staff. This village would be mediocre at best. When each of the trustees took an oath of office pursuant to law, we became. The caretakers of this village and that we had to act for and what was in the best interest of the village. Quoting Village Law 4:414. Unfortunately, prior boards have kicked the can down the road. I don't believe at the present time, this should be the option that this board should take. By again, adjourning for months at end. And not taking account of the reliance that we have as a village on the executive staff. It is solely the Board of Trustees that has the authority to redress the failures of the past and the inactions. For not having addressed the executive compensation, which I believe we should do now. Money is something and payroll is something that for the last 35 years, I've had to make a payroll. I understand what happens to people if they do not get raises. Do they do not have the opportunity for the redressing? Of the erosion of the salary. Many of the articles that I have read from the New York Bar Association Municipal Government Section, of which I am a member. Laments on the ability to retain good, hardworking government executives. We have them. In spades. It is necessary that we, as the Board of Trustees, appreciates how they have not had a raise. From between four and three quarter and three years. We've had issues in this board in the past on trying to obtain. Personnel to fit and fulfill various slots and the difficulty that that has presented to the board. The documentation that I started sending out back in. August of 2020 confirms the erosion of salary. Not that I am revealing any great secrets, but Social Security gave me an 8% raise this year. I appreciated it just for waking up in the morning.
Me too.
And that raise, that increase was also in 2021 and 2020. So the erosion of income merely by utilizing the BLS standards, the Social Security standards, or any standard you want. Was in excess of 12 to 15%. I've also forwarded to the board an executive review process and procedure. That Ms. Rosenblatt, at my request, put together. It is something that was sorely lacking in the past, of which I suggest that we continue doing going forward. So that there is not the languishing of issues. And in particular, there are many members of the executive staff. Who are making less, substantially less than their deputies, which in fact is a situation that needs to be redressed. Accordingly, the item that I have placed on the agenda with regard to the compensation of the executive staff, number three. I believe should be implemented. The documentation has been forwarded a number of times before. That it is consistent with the economics of the situation at hand. And we, as the Board of Trustees, owes a significant debt of gratitude to the executive staff for the time and efforts they have put. On our behalf. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other, any also for consent?
Well, no, the formal agenda has to be voted on first year, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other comments from the trustees?
I just, I'm in favor of the increases. I appreciate and recognize the executive team. I will point out that. I had a payroll that I had responsible for 300 people, so I understand that. And one of the key things that we learned through surveys is one of the most important things to retain talent and keep morale high. Is to do reviews at least annually. Some were done in six months. And to compensate for the level they're at, their performance. And also, we looked at. Increase in in like the economic times, like the 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 increases that we're all hit with as far as taxes and so on. So. I think it's something that we can move on, and I'd be proud to vote on it.
It's all for discussion.
Oh, is it? Sorry, I thought.
I I think everyone here appreciates the executive staff. I I do think that this is a topic that's appropriate for executive session. That I'd be happy.
It says here. On the resolution that there be a discussion first, and following that discussion. The compensation to the paid executive staff be adjusted and increased in accordance with the February 17th, 2023 analysis provided. This is a resolution. If you want to vote it down, that you can do. I don't believe it's appropriate. I don't believe that it is correct. I believe that it is kicking the can down the road. I think it should go forward.
All right. I I think it would be wholly inappropriate to vote for something like this without an executive session and a discussion.
I think the all the numbers are there. We've been kicking it around since August. I think you did a good job summarizing the finances for us, for those that I hope everybody studied it. I think we're looking at over a year, it looks to me only 280,000 or so.
That's it.
And I don't think that's a huge jump. And also, I'm just going to point out, I'm not going to mention any names. Four of our key executive staff have contacted me, and they're very concerned that they don't have. An increase, some since, well, all of them, at least through 2020, and they're hoping we're going to take action. They are aware that it's being discussed tonight. And that being voted on. So I'd hate to see those people at risk. For us.
I would agree with trustee Fronigan. We should discuss this at finalizing at an executive session. Before the March 2nd meeting.
I thought we had an executive session about this.
We did, back in August.
We didn't finalize anything.
Right, but okay.
We didn't finalize.
Trustee Torino's point is accurate. It's you're pushing it down the road again.
Now, what we're doing is doing it in an executive session and finalizing it then. We all appreciate the staff we have. They're excellent and as trustee.
What is this whole thing about transparency? Here it is. It's an issue. Vote on it. If you want to vote it down, vote it down.
Okay, well, again, yes, transparency, and I made that point. But it's something like this. It's appropriate to do in an executive session, and you know that.
Did you read everything that boosted?
I read a while ago, yes. Okay, but why can't we sit down, discuss it in an executive session, and come to an agreement, as we've done with some of the other employees, okay? As we've done when we made hires.
Right. Do we want to vote on this or not?
I do.
I I'm in favor of voting.
I'm in favor of voting it.
Guys?
All in favor?
Aye.
Yep, four out of three passes.
Thank you. Let's move on. No, he doesn't.
Yeah, it's not four to three. Section three of the board rules say that absences are negative votes. It's four to four.
I pass. So I vote, yes, for the resolution. Thank you. So it's five to four. Now you can clap. All right, let's go.
Excuse me, Mayor, before you go on, Mr. Fishberg, would you continue with the, so we could close out the grievance hearing? For this evening?
Gary, where to go?
First, the mayor has to briefly recess the meeting, then we have to reconvene as a Board of Assessment Review.
All right, let me read this. What we are doing now is a bit different than what than we normally do because we are simultaneously in the middle of a tax grievance day. Mr. Fishberg, why don't you inform the earnings as to exactly what we're doing concurrent with our board meeting?
Well, what we're doing is the law mandates that. On the third Tuesday of February, that's a date which is set aside to allow. Residents or taxpayers to appear before the Board of Assessment Review. Which consists of the Board of Trustees and the village assessor. And. You. Can hear any. Citizen comments concerning their individual assessments. It's supposed to be four hours consecutively, so the board has to go out of the recess. The regular board meeting and. Go back into the Board of Assessment Review. So we can continue with the Board of Assessment Review.
There were the two other items. Are we coming back to those for discussion?
We have to finish this.
Okay.
Yeah, so we need somebody to. Make a motion to recess the board meeting and to. Go back into the session of the Board of Assessment Review.
I so moved that we recess from the Board of Grievance and that we move back to the regular Board of Trustees meeting.
No, it's the other way around.
The other way around. I I I move that we recess from the Board of Trustees meeting, move back to the Grievance Committee. Meeting.
Okay. So now, if there are any other. Citizens here who wish to come before the Board of Assessment Re- Review to protest their assessments, now's the time to do it. Seeing nobody, I request that we now recess and adjourn from the. Oh, no, no, there's there's more to more to.
We gotta do more? But involved this.
Okay. Um, let's see, I think we're actually. No, I know. I think we covered some of this already. Okay. All right. Okay, so I wanted to note that each of the grievance petitioners who have submitted a grievance form. Which is a state promulgated form entitled Complaint on Real Property Assessment. Have been, they've been filed with the village today. I understand that in most cases, the complaint forms submitted were only completed in part, and certain information requested on those forms was not supplied. And most of the complaint, on most of the complaint forms, in particular, the information relating to income, expenses, and sales data has not been supplied. Is that correct, Mr. Donato?
That is correct.
All right.
For those petitioners who have supplied the required information, the Board of Assessment Review will review and advise. Those petitioners of any reductions in assessed value. As to those petitioners who have failed to provide any information or have provided insufficient information. In support of their complaints, I suggest the board find that it does not have before it sufficient sufficient information. To make a proper determination as to whether those assessments are illegal, erroneous, or unequal. The resolution would be in order to allow those petitioners who have failed to provide any information or have provided insufficient information. To file with the Board of Assessment Review on or before 3:30 PM on March 2nd, 2023. Any additional information supporting their alleged illegal, erroneous, or unequal assessments.
Thank you, counsel. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Trustee?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. It's unanimous. Since 5:30 PM today, we have been concurrently sitting as the Board of Assessment Review. Four hours have transpired, and I believe it is now appropriate. To adjourn that portion of the meeting, that is, the meeting of the Board of Assessment Review. Counsel? Referring to you.
Yeah, that's appropriate, and and it should be a vote to adjourn the, or at least. To adjourn the Board of Assessment Review to March 2, 2023. Need a motion to that effect?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that would be appropriate to go back into the, resume the Board of Trustees meeting.
Do we have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second. All in favor, back in back in session. Thank you, Mr. Donato. Going back to the consent calendar. Any other comments on the consent calendar?
Not hearing any. I move that the consent calendar be approved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved. If you want to not agenda.
That's 18, though, was was removed.
Oh, eighteen was removed, sorry. Moving on, non-agenda items now.
Yeah.
I thought we discussed this.
We discussed number eighteen.
Yes.
However, Deputy Mayor O'Brien indicated that he wanted to put it over to May 2nd.
March 2nd.
March 2nd.
May's too long.
Yeah.
Well, Mr.
March 2nd.
Well, Mr. Devlin.
For the purpose of affording all of the trustees the ability to formulate questions and forward it to Chief Pern and myself as fire commissioner prior to that meeting. That being the case, do you want to make that motion, Mr. Uh?
Yes, I I make that motion. Thank you for moving it for vote on March?
Second.
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 Yes, March 2nd, yeah. Not the 16th, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Now we can move on to non-agenda items.
Right, yeah.
Number 10?
Number nine, I have it on mine.
Number nine?
Nine and 10. So number nine, I added this to the agenda, the um Governor Hochul's New York, uh, New York Housing Compact Proposal. As I'm sure most people in the room have heard of, is a serious threat to our village and villages all over Long Island. And uh one, the board is um united on this, as are uh the leaders of uh the villages across Nassau County. One thing that I think is important, not just the um your village leaders advocating, but having the community engaged on this issue. And an idea that I got from Rockville Center in speaking with one of their trustees was to have um a meeting with community leaders of different civic organizations to help inform residents about this proposal, how it could impact our village, and perhaps those community leaders to help us engage the community um with their email list and outreach. So um we have the boardroom available. We want to do it quickly because the first goal is to have this taken out of the budget. And we need residents of Garden City to have their voices heard. We have the board available, the boardroom available on Tuesday, March 7th. And um I know I've spoken with some of you about this, and I think um everyone's on board with trying to do this. I have a list, and I'm open to any groups I may not have thought of. Centennial, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, PTA, SEPTA, Thunder, GCAA, Boys and Girls, LAX, Boys and Girls, TMA, Fire Department, Historical Society, um Welcome Way Again, any other groups that people are engaged with in town that will have reach to help us get community involvement on this very important issue to the village. So if there are other um groups that I overlooked, please, anyone, reach out to me, and I'll get them on there. The idea is we will invite the leaders of the community groups. If they can't make it, they can send a delegate, and it will be informational purposes for us to get this information out to residents and give them information on how they can take action to help us to um oppose this. I don't know if there's any discussion.
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea. Thank you, mayor.
We go forward with this.
All right, so we have the boardroom um scheduled. I guess we can do 7:30, which is our regular time, and um I will focus on the outreach to those um community groups, and if I missed any, please speak up and let me know.
If you can keep us advised by email, that would be appreciated.
Sure. So uh trustee Flanagan, would this be the whole board would be there? Would this be a special meeting, or are you just uh chairing the meeting? I think we should notice it, so everyone can come. If someone has a conflict and can't make it, the idea is really the trustees will have all the information before the meeting. Okay. Um, I know it's a Tuesday, so I know there are some conflicts, but the real idea of this is for us as a board to provide this information to the leaders and to enlist their help in the um outreach and engagement. Okay. And I think we may as well notice it, so then we don't have to worry about uh people, you know, being a quorum and open meetings law.
Thank you. Non-agenda items.
Number 10, you're on.
Another item that I've put on, um, I I have heard outreach in the last week from a number of residents in, actually on Harvard Street, um about an Airbnb operating. And the outreach was, well, this can't be, oh, you know, you can't be allowed to do that, right? In Garden City, and I have spoken with village council, um and it appears that we don't have a clear rule against an Airbnb in town, though other villages have um enacted uh laws or put laws in there um on the books to uh stop this uh some of the outreach. The one resident who reached out to me said he moved to Garden City with his family, and he now feels like he's living across the street from a hotel. It is a very active and successful Airbnb. People are coming and going at all hours. Um, and I have heard input that I haven't heard anyone um who thought it was not a good idea to address this. So I put it on just to let people know we are, if other trustees wanted to come, and and I'd like um village council to look into what we can do to address this issue. Right now, we only know of one Airbnb, but probably best to address it quickly before it's more.
I believe that the focus on Airbnb, while positive, misses the mark. And that is having had a number of cases in which there were fires and deaths in homes that were rented out. I believe a more appropriate role would be for village council to draft a law indicating that if an individual intends to rent out or lease their home, they have to file with the village clerk a statement or undertaking, undertaking of what they intend to do, and that the house be certified that it is capable of having, yes, that it is up to code. There was, in fact, a situation out east in which an Airbnb was rented out, but unfortunately, the house was not up to code, and the occupant died. I personally have had cases in which individuals had houses that they sought to rent out, which were substandard. I would suggest that the village consider the ordinances of Southampton and the Village of Southampton as they have substantial rental situations. And the ordinance is there mandate registration of the house and that the house actually meets all of the effective standards of protecting those individuals who come to a house unknown to them, and therefore that the safety factors are present. Do I think that this may be an encumbrance upon people? Yes. Is it intended to be an encumbrance? Yes. Is it intended for life safety? Absolutely.
That brings up a separate issue, and I'd have no objection to uh parallel tracks addressing both of those issues. They would be different local laws, so um I'm.
Right, the the lo- the local law that trustee Flanagan has talked about uh addresses transient residents of a home uh where a home may be um may have a family living in there, like the owner of the home who who is renting out a room to a transient uh person. Uh, that's one type of law. I think trustee uh Torino was speaking about another aspect of this, which is uh renting uh a house, the entire house, to um uh to somebody other than, you know, to a a a tenant who will rent the entire home. So there are really two different aspects of it. We already are starting to look at uh trying to um change our local laws in order to address both of those issues. Right now, the law says that a single-family dwelling uh might, uh can can have um up to two borders or um well, up to two borders in the home. Uh, that is in conformity with um several um uh decisions, uh court decisions. And so what you're asking to look at is um renting out to transient people uh a a single bedroom, or the other aspect of it that trustee Torino is talking about is renting the entire premises. So we'll, we're going to look at both and try to um bolster the current village laws on that.
Gary, if if the entire residence is leased, right, there should be a limitation on the number of people.
Well, well, the. The law really speaks to a family.
Right.
With um that allows, and the addition of one or two borders or lodges. A family could be three people, a family could be 10 people.
Even more.
So uh but it it really focuses on a family and the addition of one or two, one, up to two borders or lodges. Wha- whether it's leased, uh, well, whether the home is leased or whether the home is owned, and the owner of the home uh has a lodges and borders or borders uh staying in the home. That that that's permitted by the law right now as a result of several court cases. But I think what you're uh, the concern here is whether those lodges or borders can be transient people, whether uh uh, you know, whether the entire house can be rented on a transient basis. Uh, and we'll, we'll look at all the aspects of this.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, moving on. We're up to non-agenda items. I believe. So we're finished with the. Yes, please come up, state your name and how are you this evening?
Mr. Mayor, before we go much further, what did I do with it? There was an email sent out by Mr. Swazie to all of the members of the Board of Trustees that because in the absence of trustee Marciano, who is the library trustee, uh, he was being asked to put an item onto the agenda. Um, the agenda item, and I'm asking and making a motion to waive the protocol so that we could put this item on, and it had to do with the resolution for funding of a change order. So I will first make the motion to suspend the rules. All in favor? And with regard to this request for a change order, I will defer to Mr. Swazie, so I don't have to read it.
Thank you, trustee Trino. I want to first apologize to the board and to the public that this item was not on the resolution that was published. Um, it's a small dollar amount, it's eighteen hundred nineteen dollars and thirteen cents, I believe.
Yes.
Um, but the reason didn't make the agenda is because the library project is is uh, it's a beautiful project. It's coming along very nicely. But there's so many moving parts, and and I want to make sure before this went on that it presents to the board um the the right information. I didn't know if there was a need for additional dollars. So I had to unpack all the requests from the library, which of which there were five originally, and had had a conversation with uh Executive Director Malagon, um H2N Provider Documentation, Inteltech, which is the uh security vendor uh with a treasurer Wu. And then I want to also call out uh Cassie Reynolds from the purchasing department, who's just fabulous providing information, and Dorsey Palmer this morning. At the end of the day, um, this is just to replace or remove some wall and floor receptacles um so that the carpeting can put down, and if if this had to wait two more seconds, then that delays it all the work by two weeks, so uh that's all this is for.
With regard to that, add a resol- added resolution, I move for it to be approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Non-agenda items, please. Good evening, sir. Bill Bellmer.
It's been a long night.
Yes.
Uh, I'll be free. Uh, a number of months ago, the Chamber of Commerce moved out of the Toll Lodge because they couldn't uh pay the rent. And since then, to my knowledge, it has been vacant. And yet, the heat has to be kept on, so the pipes don't burst, and uh we have an example of what happens with the senior center when something like that happens. This part, I can see what happened at the Toll Lodge. The whole basement would be destroyed where the motor parkway exhibit uh is installed. I'd think that uh we could move forward by having the uh downstairs, the uh used by or administered by the Historical Society to, so people could see what that exhibit consists of and or possibly the village historian. And my question is, what is the situation uh with that building at this point?
Good evening, Mr. Bellmer. So a a couple of things. Number one is uh with the winter approaching and the cold weather, uh I had the national grid account switched over from the chamber to the village, so the heat is on. It's, it's uh probably not set high enough for humans to live in, but it'll keep the pipe from freezing. I still have yet to move over the electric account. I have the form on my desk. We have put money in the capital project for the upcoming budget season, which replaces the old roof with a new cedar uh shake roof. Uh, I have put money in the operating budget to um clean the the building thoroughly, including the rugs, shampoo rugs, and to put a fresh coat of paint on them, uh and also put the humidifiers in there to uh control any moisture. So we are planning on uh taking full control of the building um uh through this initiative. And as far as the basement, as far as the use of the building, that's the board decision. I don't think.
Toward what end are we doing this? Because even even with the heat on, I'm sure the heat was on in the senior center, and yet somebody got surprised, uh and that could happen here also. Uh, I think, in fact, uh people don't go there every day, even like they might go to the senior center, so uh bad things could happen uh before anybody would know about it. But the question is, uh, does the board have any idea what they're going to use the building for?
We haven't discussed.
How is that going to move forward?
It's, I don't think it's been discussed, and a decision arrived at yet. We'll do our best to keep the building intact for five years. Yeah, Mr. Blake, makes a Blake's crews shut off the water, the sprinklers, and blew out the line, so we are taking care of it. Uh, we will be ran, landscape on the outside of the spring, so we do have plans. It's just not uh, you know, we don't have anybody present there all day, but we are paying attention to the facility.
Okay.
For some future undetermined use.
Thank you, Bill. Any other comments, non-agenda items? Please come up.
Good evening. Steve Alardi, 139 Meadow Street. Trustee Flanagan, I didn't hear you mention any of the POAs. Would they be invited to that housing discussion?
Sure, you know, I was not including political FabGC or POAs, but they would. I have no, um, if you'd like to come, we could have include.
Sometimes they're referred to as civic organizations, so I guess they're civic when they want to be, and they're political when it fits that mold. The Country Life Press Building, I understand, was, a resolution was passed by this board, I think either six to one or seven to one to turn it over to the railroad with some stipulations of what we want it. But I hear now that there was a a letter written to the National Register or something, and now the railroad is backing away from that project. So is there any uh update that you can provide on the Country Life Press Building and the railroad's uh plan to take it down?
So, good evening, uh, I'm sorry. We have um regular contact with all these on Mr. Fasano, um, who has been uh contacting me weekly. Um, and the board's been very anxious to get updates because when we left, when we last left it in their hands, the idea was to allow the rail to proceed with their capital plans, which would have um taken down the building, possibly put up a handicap ramp, or adjust the existing ones, that we're gonna put up a second ramp, modify the landscaping, the hot tracks, and also uh not. modify the landscaping, the haunted tracks, and also not pursue investment in the plaza that would impact the area in a negative way. So for weeks, trustee Marciano specifically has been the lead person contacting me, any updates, any updates? A week or so ago, Mr. Fasano provided, we had a meeting, Mr. Givinello, Mr. Broney, a few people from the village, the police commissioner, regarding the work that's about to commence over by Cherry Valley Trestle Cathedral Rails and Hilton Rails, the track bed. And he also gave us, asked for an update on Country Life Press. He told me that someone from the Historical Society had reached out to the State Historical Preservation Organization, SHPO, and that there's an application pending. I don't believe that the application has been accepted yet to put it on the New York State Historical and possibly the Federal Registry. However, Mr. Fasano indicated to me that the railroad, which has a great need for capital dollars in other aspects of their system, will not be doing anything here. And I think, although I can't speak for him, I didn't ask him the question specifically, I have a feeling that that will be true, even if the SHPO application doesn't go through. And because they are using federal funds, they've been delaying design on this particular station because of the village's interest. But I think, I believe they're going to relocate those funds somewhere else. Doesn't mean down the road, decade or two, they might not come back to it. But I really don't, that's the best I know right now, that it's a, they, they are not looking to do anything with the property. I did ask him as a follow-up to that conversation, and I did communicate to the board the same day, or the next day. I did ask him if we could allow Mr. Blake's team, and Steve specifically, to do a little more appropriate landscaping in the area. And he suggested that if that was something the board desired, we could enter into an IMA and into municipal agreement, just as the Folksman Hesse did with their train station, where they would let us plant on their property and do all the proper paperwork and insurances. So that's yet to be determined.
Is there any new information on the monies for the Main Street construction project coming from the MTA Community Fund?
Again, as was discussed earlier, we have to give them all the invoices for the work that we've done and had done. Once we do that, then they'll reimburse us for it.
And they're going to reimburse us for the full two point one million or whatever that was?
I don't know that it gets to that, but no, we have one point six left on the Community Benefit Fund, and that's what we'll get reimbursed.
Okay, and last, Mr. Swazi, is there any update on the Meadow Street flooding project?
Yes, and I know that you and your neighbors are very curious about this and watching it closely and sending emails, and we, and myself and Mr. Broney try to respond and give you updated information. The way it stands now is this board has passed a couple of meetings ago, maybe three meetings ago, they did approve the design work for LKMA, the engineering company. LKMA anticipates having a design throughout the bid when, Mr. Broney. Around mid-July, we just have full bid specifications. I have placed in the capital program for DPW, Mr. Broney and I put a one point five million dollars into the budget for this capital project. That included a twenty percent contingency. We also, as part of the design for the specs, LKMA is also taking on the responsibilities of negotiating, negotiating the permits from the county and for the Village of Hempstead, and also working on identifying which of the properties would like to let us basically trench through them to get to the culvert in the Village of Hempstead. We do have a couple of residents, we sent email, letters to all the residents, and we do have a couple of residents, and the village happens to own a piece of property. I think it's almost directly across from College Place, probably a paper street that never was fulfilled. We can probably go through there and through a home on the other side. That, I think that home has shown interest. So if all goes well, we should have this thing out to construction by the fall. And it'll, it'll resolve to a great degree, the flooding issue. The issue that exists is that the water that's in that culvert originates as far north as the expressway. And when it gets down to all culverts, only during very heavy rain events, it backs up, which is not helpful, as you know. And although ninety percent of the time when it's not a heavy rainfall, it helps us. So the idea is to close the culvert at the point where it's not helping us and move it down at a lower hydraulic grade, which will have it empty beyond Meadow Street.
So is that putting the paving of Meadow and Grove and Commander and Lindbergh into twenty twenty-four?
No, we anticipate, well, there's another question for Mr. Broney, because once we get the specs and we bid it out, or my idea would be to come to the board and make an emergency declaration so we can give it to our existing, we might be able to give it to our existing contractor already, right? We don't need an emergency declaration. Right, so we have, we have a road paving contract with Pratt, and all but a couple of items are in that, so we can do a change order for that with the board's approval. So there's no emergency declaration, so we could probably accelerate that once the design is finished. We don't have to, we might be able to start it mid to late summer and have it done by the fall. But it is, it is pushing the Meadow Street and Grove Street and Commander and Lindbergh paving later into the paving season, but it can get done in twenty-three.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Steve, quick question. Have you had any, just out of curiosity, any flooding recently? Hopefully not, I'm just curious, yeah.
But it's more a block from where I am, so I'm not sure. I haven't been around for the last month.
Yeah, no problem. I was just curious.
Dangerous question. It's like saying traffic's moving well.
Hey, listen, this is near, near and dear to Steve, I know that.
Any other questions or comments on the gen, non, non agenda items? Non agenda.
Hi, I'm Michelle Harrington, one twenty-four Whitehall. Two things. Lynn Krug wanted to make sure that she expressed her thanks. She had to leave early for something at home, but for the parking, for the seniors, the part-time parking, so that's one. Two, just with supplementing what you're looking at doing, Mary, the POAs are having a meeting on Monday night, the twenty-seventh, at Stewart School Cafeteria. And we've sent out an invitation to all the residents who are members of the POAs. And we put an ad in the Garden City, article in the Garden City News last week, and we'll have it this week. We're doing a postcard writing event where we have postcards and postage pens. We're going to have refreshments, and we're inviting residents to be able to write to our elected local officials about Sands and about Hokel's housing plans. And we'll have statements for them to kind of paraphrase.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Well done.
Good evening, Bob Rosfayer-Gro. I know it was discussed about the Country Life Press Station. And apparently, there was an application sent to the New York State Park Recreation and Historic Preservation and wanting this site to be, to be added to the National Registry. And apparently, it was, the application came from the, from the Historical Society. And in fact, I have the application in my hand. I'd just like to remind the Historical Society and the people here, meeting, that due to the fact that this is private property, it's owned by the Long Island Railroad, the state statute and the National Registry states that certified historic properties, honest or properties, that there are no restrictions placed on private owners of registered properties. Private, private owner, property owners may sell, alter, or dispose of their property as they wish. So even if this becomes certified, as far as placed on the National Registry, it still can be taken down. Thank you.
I'm not going to comment on that.
Steve Gray, Cambridge Avenue, forty-four Cambridge. Just to add to what he said, and by the way, thank you publicly to Mr. Swazi. I sent an email inquiring about this, and you responded on a Saturday night. Hard work. Anyway, just as St. Paul's has the designation, so would this property if the nomination succeeds. My understanding from the website is that the process from the state takes ninety days. I don't know when the process started. But unless there's a definitive word from the state and the railroad as to what is going to happen, I know that there's a resolution from December fifteenth by the board indicating that the wishes of the village were that the building be demolished. So I would simply ask the board to follow up and make sure that they know of the board's previous resolution. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Karen?
Anybody on Zoom wish to speak on non agenda items?
No one else? Seeing none, I make a resolution that we adjourn for tonight. I agree. Second, all in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.